All right, we will call to order our Harrisville City Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll move on to our second agenda item, which is consent approval of the planning commission meetings from April as well, two thousand twenty-three. You got a good chance to check it out. Entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve our planning commission minutes as well.
All right, move on to our third agenda item, which is a public hearing. However, I'd like to review the rules of a public hearing really quick. The public hearing will give you an opportunity to state your opinion and share your thoughts. Please remember tonight's public hearing is not a discussion, and feedback in regard to your questions or comments may not be provided within this meeting this evening. Please remember to say your name clearly and speak into the microphone when taking part in public comment period.
So they're not gonna make, they're not gonna lay asking questions for anything?
Each person will have three minutes to speak. Please be mindful of that time limit. Be respectful, no shouting, pointing fingers, or applause. Any member of the public will be asked to leave if their conduct is disorderly and escorted if necessary. The governing body on two-thirds vote may expel any person who is disorderly during this meeting. That being said, I'll take a motion to open this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to be open the public hearing. I'll second.
All in favor? All right, this is Jenny. We want to, we're gonna give Jenny a three minutes, three-minute opportunity for staff review, and then following that, we'll let developer or representative, Mark Kuna or representative have a three-minute review as well. So, Jenny.
Good evening, Commissioners. We have a staff memo regarding the proposed ordinance by forty. What staff has prepared for you is the approximate location of the proposed development and with regard to the future land use map and the current zoning map. I'd like to draw your attention to the visual on the left hand side. This hatched area is actually commercial. We adopted an ordinance a number of months ago that changed that zoning to commercial. So the current zoning map has been updated and is accurate now. Additionally, the application includes a proposed amendment to the regulations restricting collective use on residential streets. And we've included that and identified on our most recent adoption of our transportation map that was adopted in February of the year, that identified seven fifty west as a future collector road. And in preparation of the proposed height of this development, staff has prepared some visuals for you, and the comparisons that we tried to use were things you would, you would acknowledge or know off the top of your head. Some of the new video buildings are a height of forty-five feet. The proposed building is a seventy-foot height, and the Vennin Arena, or more than known as Delta Center, is a ninety. So we've got different angles and views that kind of display that those buildings and a proposed building with its approximate length and width as well. So things to consider, the compliance with, the compliance with Utah code, the Utah code requirements to hold a public hearing, and the notice has been given for this public meeting as well. That's all.
Oh, and then who do I? All right, Mr. Kuna, Representative. Yeah. So what we're doing with this building is it's.
Yeah, Mark.
So what we're doing with this building is it's an actual, it's a field house. It's an event center. So it's going to be two indoor soccer fields, synthetic soccer fields, full-size. There'll be stripe for football and for that soccer, football, and the cross there. And then on the upper mezzanine, the reason we need the height is because with that height, it'll be the only place in the state of Utah that we can have indoor football here, because everybody else, you can throw, you can run, can't punt or kick. So with that, that will bring a lot of money, a lot of investment into this area, just what the traffic brings in. I don't know if you're familiar with who Susie Becker is with Zion's Bank. We had her go through and do a financial analysis, what it would be, and with this venue, it would bring to Harrisville City a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year as far as for like what we were talking about. And I can have her send you all that paperwork. We tried to get it today, but I don't know if she's out of town or what. But anyway, so also in this building, it's going to be a public building to where we're gonna have on the upper mezzanine, volume, full-size volleyball courts on, on the east end, the north and south ends, east and west ends, we're gonna have six full-size pickleball courts. So we're talking, everything's indoor year-round. We're doing kids leagues, adult leagues. So this is going to be a full public building without the public having to build it. And the difference between, I know these buildings, as you draw them out, obviously, when you put them little small squares together, they look quite large. The size as far as the dimensions of the width and the length falls within code. It's not a problem. What we're trying to do is we need that, that height to be able to host the events in upper mezzanine to clear the space for the volleyball and everything to present to the city or for the public to be able to use. And then the difference that you look at it, if you look at a tree from like the road or from the, the homes on each side, a twenty-foot tree is an inch tall. That's the difference that they're gonna notice from the road and from the deal. If you put the two billys together, take one out, fifty footer, you put a seventy, you cannot tell the difference of the buildings. So that sounds like it's a lot, but visually, you can't tell. You can't look at a building. So this one's thirty feet high, this one's fifty feet high. You can't do it. So if you really break it down to what people are gonna be seeing visually, it doesn't make a difference. It's unnoticed.
Well, we can open public comment at this time?
Open? Okay, I'm Larry Lilly, other twenty-four oh four north, seven fifty west. So yes, that's seven fifty west. That's the road that they're gonna have all this traffic gonna be coming down. Since the Beto's was put in there, traffic has increased already exponentially. The intersection over there that's at the roadblock, it's been coming down there. It's crazy right now. So now you're proposing access to commercial from residential. That's against the city's land use ordinance, section eleven thirteen oh sixty. You're not supposed to allow access to commercial property from residential. Seven fifty is a residential street, and now you want commercial access now? And then the developer just said you're gonna get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year from a, a Delta Center-sized building? That's ridiculous. That's not even worth it. I mean, that's gonna be right outside my door. I can see it right there. I have to see seventy feet there easy. That's gonna block that whole access there. And no, I don't think Harrisville needs this. I mean, it's not even, it doesn't make sense. You know, seven fifty west doesn't even have storm sewer, and I've been paying that for three years, even though it doesn't even have it. It has no sidewalks, no gutters, nothing, yet it's residential. So are you, how are you gonna handle all the additional traffic? Are you gonna widen the road? Well, what's the plan there? I mean, it's, everybody on seven fifty west is gonna be impacted hugely. It's, it's not, this isn't just about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the city. That's, that's not, if it was millions, okay, I could see consideration, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, to do that to the residents is not even worth it. And then, let's see. Yeah, I just, I oppose this just because for me, Harrisville is a rural area, and to have a Delta Center-type building there, right there, and then all this traffic down our residential street makes no sense. And people who live on that street, I'm sure will back me up. I mean, what if me and the neighbors wanted to put a seventy-foot hotel in our backyards? You know, zone it commercial. Okay, what's fair is fair. You know, if we did that, yeah, it sounds ridiculous, right? Because that's, it is. But you know, sometimes the scope creep, you know, they propose something small, and now all of a sudden it doubles in size, triples in size, and my time's up. But you know, that, that seems like the plan, so I don't agree with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Jeff Richardson, I live at twenty-three ninety-sixth north, seven fifty west. My name's for the gentleman who just spoke, and you know, you might not be able to tell the difference between a fifty-foot building and a seventy-foot building, but you'd surely tell the difference between no building and a fifty-foot building. And the increase in traffic on seventeen, seven fifty west, I noticed it every time I tried to get out of my driveway. It reminds me when I first moved here, twenty-seven hundred west or twenty-seven hundred north was again, and that was just like a freeway, seven fifty west during rush hour, and it's starting to return to that again. The increase in traffic to get to that building through a residential area is just not good. I'm strictly opposed to it. I'm sure that there's other sites that they can put up a building just like what they're talking without interrupting the lives of the citizens who live along seven fifty west. And that's all I'm gonna say for tonight, and I'm totally opposed to it.
Thanks, Jeff.
My name's Mike Boerish. I live at twenty-seven eighty-three or twenty-three eighty-three north, seven fifty west, which is directly adjacent to the backside of their building going up. My dream was to move my family to a rural area with some property, and we found that dream. Having a seventy-foot building there is gonna limit the amount of privacy that my property and the adjacent properties will have. We hold family functions in my backyard. I constantly have family over there. We entertain our, everything in our backyard. I sure, I'm sure I'm not the only person that does that. I'm strictly opposed to this because it's gonna invade the privacy of the homeowners on the backside of that building, not just because of the building. It's gonna go against the views, the parking lots being there. You know, I don't know what they plan on doing, whether they plan on putting a wall up. But it's just gonna invade the privacy of all the homeowners there on top of the, the amount of traffic. My girls walk home from school down that street, and like my neighbor was saying, there's no storm drains. My house just flooded this year. We actually made it on the news because of it. You know, we're paying all these property taxes, and we're not seeing anything out of it. You know, what's to stop a car from flying down the street like they do now and hitting one of the kids in the neighborhood? There's no sidewalks, so they're, they're forced to walk along the side of the road. Now, we've raised our kids to pay attention to traffic and look both ways when they cross. But cell phones and, and, you know, people that mess around with things in their car don't pay attention to that. I'm opposed to all, all of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Savannah Bonish. I also live at twenty-three eighty-three north, seven fifty west.
What was your name?
Savannah.
Savannah.
Bonish, yes. So I just want you to imagine for a second, every day I get up and I stand at my bedroom window, and I have the most amazing view of the tallest American flag just right off of twenty-seven hundred. And in that view, I get to look out in my backyard and my neighbor's pastures, and I see horses. And my daughters love going out there and feeding horses and goats and playing, and my nephews go out there as well. It was mentioned that we wouldn't really notice a difference with this building coming up. Well, I'll tell you right now, I'm not gonna have that view of the American flag every day from my bed. I'm not gonna have a beautiful view going across, looking at all of these horses, because right on my back of my property is gonna be a parking lot where my girls play, where my nephews play, where we feed horses and, and sheep, and we enjoy our summer evenings. Do you sit on your back porch and enjoy your iced tea in the summer, looking at a building as tall as Bidden? Does that make sense for Harrisville? Do the figures on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for this city? Does it really make sense per month what that's gonna do for us and how it's gonna affect our neighbors? I don't think so. So I'm opposed to it, and I hope you guys keep that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Cope. I'm twenty-four sixteen north, seven fifty west. Same, the difference between seventy and ninety may not be visible at a distance to the developer, but the distance between forty-five feet and seventy feet is quite significant. I feel like in a seventy-foot tall building, we'd be out of keeping with the character of the area for, for every building, not just for this particular facility. And he's seeking to have the ordinance changed, and that is unacceptable to me. I feel like a building of this type, there'd be lots of light pollution and from the building itself, from the parking lot and from the access roads. The current land use ordinance states that physical development should benefit the community by providing a needed good and service. The fact that there isn't one now does not mean that it's needed. There are several facilities around, certainly the same sorts of things. There are two indoor soccer fields on twelfth street in Ogden. There's one in North Ogden. North Ogden's got a pool. There's a gym, a rec center in Far West. There's pickleball courts around all over the place. Utah State has an indoor football facility, and the U is trying to build one that they are running into cost problems. As far as the traffic is concerned, your, this, the change that they are seeking in the first place, it's currently considered a local road. It's a future collector, not a current one. We'd have, we would, this would in adversely impact adjacent residential and agricultural land uses, which is in red contradiction to current land use ordinance. Traffic flow in the parking lot looks to be damned by the existence of only two points of in and out. And the parking lot itself looks woefully inadequate to house the number of cars that would be housing people attending things there. For the traffic going up and down the easement, the access road off of seven fifty would detrimental to the quality of life for the people who live on either side of that. And to say that this facility would provoke, quote, provide an anchor for future commercial growth speaks to displacing twelve current homeowners on the west side of seven fifty. And that's, I was just looking and counting. It would also negatively, the, the traffic, the level of traffic, but also negatively impact the quality of life and the property values of twenty-two homeowners on the east side, seven fifty west, and eleven more on the west side. Disturbance to the residential areas of the community would be considerably greater than the limited amount the ordinance allows. Right?
Done.
Right on the button.
Right on. Thanks, Chris, and you, respected.
My name's Catherine Barrett. I live at twenty-three thirty-nine west, seven fifty south, and I just wanna say, no. This is not what we need. First of all, it's gonna create a traffic hazard on seven fifty. The residents there have paid their taxes. They've raised their kids. They've done everything they need to do to have a safe neighborhood, and this is gonna undermine all of it. I want to know from the developer how they plan to pay for this, because if it's tax increments, that don't cut it. We all pay our taxes. He needs to pay his. I don't see any place in this map where there's any kind of water retention. We have water issues as it is. You put this big building there, where is their water retention? The quality of our neighborhood is gonna go down so much because of the noise and the traffic. If you want it in your backyard, that's fine with me, but I don't want it in my backyard. What's it gonna do to our property taxes? They're gonna go up again. What are we gonna get from it? No storm drain, no sidewalks, no curb and gutter, but we pay our taxes just like everybody else. And as far as the ingress and egress goes for this building on a, on a residential street, really? That's just crazy. Go to UDOT, get your ingress and egress from them.
David Skeens. Might not be the most popular tonight, but that CP two that's been sitting there forever that hasn't had any development on it as far as my land, all the way to twenty-five fifty, is CP two. That's why there hasn't been any development on it. If you've got somebody that can come in and make money for the city to lower our taxes, which it would be paying sales tax and everything else, I'm not totally against it. As far, I'm for it. I want the city to get revenue so that we don't have to pay it. Egress and the seven fifty is a situation, but as I expand, it'll still be a situation because that's our second way out. I do want you to keep that in mind. This is coming first, a little bit before, but even when Frank Fredelsky owned it, and yes, he owned it, he always saved that thirty feet and bought it. And I saved the distance to have the road go out seven fifty, so we got more than one out. And I carry about twenty acres there. Will it be semis? Will it be other things? No, you can't predict the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Sean Wilkinson. And I'd like to speak to the zoning issues that we're talking about tonight. First, the issue of commercial development in this area has already been decided. The property is zoned CP two right now, and it would allow for a forty-five-foot-tall building to do the same thing. So the height of twenty-five foot feet is what we're talking about, the difference between forty-five and seventy. As far as the access goes, we also have requested an amendment to the, the code to allow that additional access on seven fifty west. That is the case further north. Highway eighty-nine, the, the commercial properties on highway eighty-nine have access through to seven fifty west currently. And I think that's clear to see. Additionally, seven fifty west is going to be a collector in the future. The, the entire area that we're talking about right now has already been zoned by Harrisville City or zoned for the future on the land use map to be CP two, including where all of these houses are. Now, I understand that people live there and they love it, and, and it's beautiful, but Harrisville City has made that decision. So please consider what the future land use map shows as you make your decision tonight. Just a couple of other things. Harrisville City has also recently talked about a rec center. That is something that has been discussed. I believe that was on the ballot last year. There were also, I believe, some applications for funding that also came in for that use. So it is something the city has been talking about. And just to conclude, Harrisville City has essentially made the decision that this is where commercial property will go. If you look at Pleasant View's general plan as well, on twenty-five fifty north, just, just north of here, that entire corridor right there is zone C two and will continue to be that way on their future land use map. They allow sixty-five-foot-tall buildings currently. So whether it's in this area, whether it's across the street, this area is going to grow commercial. That is what the zoning tells us. That is what the general plan tells us. And I think what is being proposed here is in line with what your future land use map shows. Again, I think that the biggest issue that we're talking about is the twenty-five-foot height difference, because otherwise, what is being proposed could be allowed right now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Branda Sotwell. Um, I didn't come prepared like all these amazing people that have all these facts. Mine's more of an emotional response, but the building that is being proposed to be put in is actually my backyard. The easement that they wanna use from seven fifty west is to the side of my driveway. It basically is right next to my driveway. If anyone drives down seven fifty west, they will notice where this building was, was a lake, an actual lake. I mean, I realize it's not a lake, but it was huge. Tons of birds, tons of geese. I realized that it's already been zoned for commercial. There's nothing we can do about that. That water's gonna go into my house, into my neighbor's houses. That's already gonna be an issue. We addressed that at the last time, and I don't know what's gonna happen with that, but the water's gonna have to go somewhere. This building is there. Um, that being said, I know we can't stop it from being commercial. It's already commercial. My ask is until this area is actually all commercial like it is planned, in the future, people keep saying in the future, it's gonna be commercial. Well, in the future, let's use that easement for the access, not right now, not when all these houses live there, not when there's kids, not when there's no sidewalks. We can't walk on the street. There's way too much traffic, and all that's gonna do is make it that much worse. I'm not saying that this is a bad idea. I'm just saying right now, we should not be giving access out of a residential street. That's my biggest ask, because I feel at this point, there's no way we're going to stop a big building from going back there, fifteen feet from my property line. So that's what I have to say to take in consideration. If it's done in the future, that's different. When all of our houses have been bought for commercial, they can get access. But right now, it's not fair to the people who live on seven fifty to have to deal with that extra traffic. And the lack of safety with the no sidewalks, as a lot of people have mentioned, it's already busy, and that's just gonna make it that much worse. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deborah Hall. I live at eight thirty west, twenty-five fifty north. So I'm a little bit west of seven fifty. My sister lives at twenty-five twenty-nine, seven fifty. So she's down there, and she has horses. And my property in Pleasant View has already been zoned commercial like they were saying. And I just would like everybody to keep in mind, there's already a big rec complex going down east on twenty-five fifty, which is gonna be rushed like in late night. So I think the traffic on seven fifty is already gonna double. I mean, we're concerned about it just on twenty-five fifty percent. But I just wanted to say to keep it in mind, my kids grew up while their, while their friends lived over there on seven fifty. So I'm real familiar with it with my sister. And I would just, I don't think it's a bad idea that they've got going. I just think that location, it might not be good for right now because all these people have their kids and they need their neighborhood. Thank you. And they need their neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm Nick Garret, I'm at twenty three, twenty nine north on seven fifty. Um, not much I can say, that these guys already said. We all know the building's probably gonna go up. I don't think that there's anything any of us gonna do. He's right, the issue with the, the difference between forty five, seventy five is a big deal. It's, it, yeah, and, and like she was saying, I get that, you know, this is already planned. It, we already know, I read in the thing, it's already planned, your seven fifty is gonna be commercial. Our buildings or our houses on these maps are already pink, if you look at the right side, meaning they're all commercial. It's already in the works, we all know it, but she's absolutely right. It is not the time right now to do that. Because not only does it, his property does, value doesn't get dropped, your property value doesn't get dropped, only our property values get dropped. I'm getting older, I'm looking to retire soon, that's my retirement money. Right? So it's a difference between me having to come up with money to retire or not retire. It's a big deal. It's a big deal to me. I've worked hard my whole life and have somebody roll in and say, hey, you know, this is good for the city and all that stuff. It's great. I want everything for the city we can get for the city. I love Harrisville. I look out my window every single day. At the sunset or whatever, the storms, all that stuff. I'm not directly behind this building, but it's clearly gonna block. What I see. Seven fifty is a nightmare already. It's gonna be, we all know it's gonna be a nightmare. When our houses, like she said, when our houses are all turned into commercial, that's the time to turn seven fifty. Not gonna help Randy out or the people on the other side. But, but that might be another battle that we get later on. Seven fifty is not a good idea to make a commercial thing. And Kathy said, the fight is with UDOT to turn, I'll put a light in on eighty nine. That's the, that's the alternative to seven fifty being. Um, a commercial street, basically. So you're gonna have a commercial street in the middle of a residential neighborhood until you turn these houses. Into commercial apartments. That's the deal. So the fight in my opinion for seven fifty is a, a fight with UDOT. To get them to put a light right there so red traffic can go in and out of that area. Still not gonna make it good for us. I mean, I, I don't think any of us are stupid, the writing's on the wall. It's just a matter of whether or not. The people are ignored and the people are not looked after. The character of Harrisville City and the character of you guys are who's gonna decide. What's gonna happen with us and with our lives on this street. That's pretty much what it comes down to. Thank you.
Hello. Uh, my name's Casey Saunders. My family owns property at twenty five, ten north, seven fifty west. Uh, we've owned property on seven fifty west since my great grandfather and I one day own that property. Again, I'm not prepared either. I'm sorry. I think what people have been telling you is, we've always considered Harrisville a, a family oriented city. You know, I've grown up in Harrisville all my life. I was majestic the first year it opened. I, I'm a Harrisville citizen. Uh, looking forward, yes, we plan to go commercial. Uh, that's great, but what we're asking you is to remember that we still wanna be a family oriented community and we don't want. How do I put that? So you're, you're already zoned for forty five feet and, and you've got all that there. Okay, we don't want you. The vote is to change the ordinances to allow seventy five feet and allow the access right next to her driveway, right? We don't want that. We don't want that as a family oriented community. Yes, we wanna grow and progress and get money for the city, but not in that way. We don't wanna be that big. We don't want that much attention. Again, I've grown up on that lifeline or that road my entire life. Uh, we've always had water pressure issues in that city, in that part of town. Uh, Mr. Meadows has always been. Wow, high water table. So again, we have to start building on that land, that water has to go somewhere, right? That's gonna go into my, not my basement, it's under my house. I, I don't need that. Uh, again, there's, there's, pardon me, there's hardly ever a police presence on seven fifty. And we already have people speeding up and down the road all the time. You say, excuse me, I, I forgot your name, Sir Mark. Mark, you, you said, uh, the lady in Zion's bank did a study to show we would get a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the city a year. Uh, pardon my ignorance again, I'm not prepared. Is that available? Public scrutiny? Can we see that?
We're getting off track here on the question.
I apologize. So what, what, what my question really is just to you guys is, does that encompass everything? Does that include another salary for another police officer to, to, to help on that drain on our public system, on our public funded? Uh, services, firefighters, police officers, all of that, everything that that. Type of facility is gonna bring to Harrisville, do we, do we have the infrastructure to support that? Does that hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year support that in a way that meaningfully offsets all of our opinions and all of our families livelihoods in that neighborhood? I don't think so. Most of this community here that has shown up to say that, has tried to say that. I hope you do take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
I'm Christie Sandberg and I live at twenty four eighty north, seven fifty west. Um, I just wanna say that the traffic on seven fifty west is already a joke. Um, right where I live, um, the access point to this building would be right across the street. Okay. Um, I am a hundred percent opposed to this. A hundred percent opposed to more traffic going down our street where we have uh, no sidewalks there. Um, the fifteen years that my husband and I have lived in our home, our flood, our house has flooded multiple times. Okay, because of the high water table. So what they're talking about is where is all this water gonna go? But my biggest concern is the fact that, you know, this kind of family community. Uh, we have property, we have horses, all these other kinds of things, and we didn't, we were not here to be in a commercial neighborhood. Okay, and so, um, again. Absolutely opposed to all this traffic that is going to be more down seven fifty west. And what was already brought up is that there's no, there, there's been no, um, patrolling down that road either. As many times as people have sped by my home, not allowing me to get out of my driveway to try to back out of my driveway because there's so much traffic. Um, so I, I would like you to please, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Can I say just something else? I've been using all my time.
Sure.
Okay. I just, it's the question I was listening to other people say, has there been like a wetland study done on the land? Because of the amount of birds and the water that's always there. Is that, do we know that? Is there in any way that that, any of that was protected or anything like that? That's my question. Okay, that, that was all I wanted to say. Okay, well, and one more thing. The hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, I bet you if we just hired one police officer, he could make that in tickets, but if he won't go six down that road.
So, my name's William Maun. You know, I ran on, on, over here around, around this area on twenty three, twenty seven north, seven fifty west. But I have a lot of friends that own property there, and when we bring up the topic of wetland. Um, and doing a wetland study, I, I don't think you could possibly vote until you do that, because there are properties on seven fifty west. That have designated wetland areas on the property themselves, and they cannot do anything. To that protected piece of property. They can't fill it in, they can't develop it, they can't put a shed on it. And a wetland study is probably, is essential to understand if that is protected. Either federally or through the state, before you can actually go to vote. Because if it is protected wetlands, then that easement area, the lake next to her house. Cannot be developed on. If it, if it's either federally protected or state handed. So I just bring that forward to the community there.
I'll address the wetland issue. When twenty five fifty and twenty seven hundred went together, they done the study.
Sex actually is all concerned with the study. This actual hearing is only about.
There is no wetland there.
This public hearing is about the height condition, all the height, the height situation of the building, not about any of the other items that were.
And I have one thing, it is though about something else. He has requested to have the ordinance changed for the transportation for it work. And can I throw in while I'm here, the current, uh, the current thing doesn't even allow for a collector to have access. Into a commercial venture. He's proposing that a collector should be given that access. Thank you.
Is there anyone else before I join in?
Yes, if anyone on Zoom has a comment, go ahead.
Okay, I'm on Zoom. This is William Allen. My property is twenty four, forty one north, seven fifty west. The proposed building will be in my backyard. I live next to Wade and Candace. The biggest issue I have, besides everything else, everybody's talked about. Uh, the gentleman that's proposing this says, you know, there's no difference between forty five feet, seventy five feet. You know, I'm looking out my back door right now, and if everyone on the commission could just envision. I'm looking out my backyard right now, I can see highway eighty nine. I can see two foot of standing water to the right of me with geese on it right this moment. I can walk up to my back fence, which will be right up against this property. And if there's a seventy five foot wall there, compared to a forty five foot wall, yeah, maybe right at the fence, it doesn't make a difference. But if I walk back on my property, my property's three hundred and sixty five feet long, if I walk back a hundred feet. Seventy foot makes a big difference. There's no way I'll see over seventy five foot even from my house. I just am really against the height. Um, and again, I just don't think Harrisville City needs that. My property taxes for Harrisville City were raised three hundred and sixty seven percent this year. That's a thousand dollar jump on my property taxes in one year. So bringing a hundred and twenty five thousand, when you've nurtured all of us. To give up just on this block alone, a hundred thousand dollars more in city taxes. Bringing a hundred and twenty five thousand a year to our city just doesn't make sense for this inconvenience. So I am totally opposed to this. And, and I'm really worried about the water situation. I, I mean, we've talked about this two years ago when they wanted to rebuild the bar. And, you know, talked about, they've already pushed back three feet of dirt off the eighty nine back about a hundred feet. And that's just, you know, like I said, there's two stood, two feet of standing water out there all the time. And everybody is just like, well, you know, we'll deal with that if it happens. Well, it's gonna happen. Without the storm rating system in place, the water will have nowhere to go. So, again, I'm totally opposed. Thank you.
Anybody else online? Would care to offer any comments? Can I answer a lot of your questions? Uh, we can get to a point where we can do that. I'll say we're just not right now. Uh, anyone else? Gentleman over here has to say something.
It's like on the other side of the street. I don't know what their problem is.
We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. In a second. I'll second. All right, our, and item number four. Uh, extension act, grant of management approval for proposed ordinance by forty, admitting CP two commercial zone higher requirements for indoor. Um, we have an opportunity, um, staff, comments, commissioners, or. Or Jenny and Justin, if there's, is that, is that gonna be questions directly to you? Is that gonna be?
However, you'd like, if you'd like us to address some of the items that were brought out in the public comments, if you'd like your developer to respond.
So you know what, let's, let's do that.
My understanding it all goes to that property from the neighbors.
But, but at the end of the day, it's really, it's not about water at all. But the actual public hearing is about how high it's required, the height, and then that change also changes the access. That we want to bring up. Mark, would you like to come up and answer to, answer a few of these questions? Not questions to Mark, but Mark can answer some of these questions that he had heard during this public call. If I, can I face them, so there's other ones that have, have the concerns, is that okay? So I, first of all, I'm gonna, I understand change. I understand that change, nobody wants to change. And. You know, there isn't ever a right, because you're, you own it now. Your family owned it before you. Your fam next kid's gonna own it. These places, they, there's never a good time. This, this, um, belt never ends. So at some point, it's gonna end. Somebody's gonna put a building there. It could be a dog food bag, something's going in there. At least when I'm bringing you, it's something that is gonna be beneficial to the area. Um, like I said, you're talking about the traffic. I've heard a whole lot of stuff about seven pick, huge concern on seven fifty travel. If you look at this, the parking lot, everyone's gonna access eighty nine. The only people that have come through here are in your neighborhood. So it's whoever you want to access, when you guys want a community facility, here's where you're coming in. Everybody else, the majority is coming through eighty nine. Okay, so again, this is not questions. Yeah, Mark, we can close this. And as far as the, the water, huge water issue. Is, like she said, the water drains onto this lot. I've done coring out here. We went down fifteen, twenty, twenty five feet, never hit water. The reason you're seeing this big old pond out here, the first three feet is solid clay. Water does not get through it. And it can't be a wetland because it's not a natural feed. There's no natural water on this property. It's rungs. So those ducks and geese are seeing right now, here, middle of summer, there's no ducks and geese. There's nothing out there by a bunch of white dried out bite, because that's what it is. You get below that. And there's, it's nothing. It's silky soil that doesn't hold water. I've got the coring, we've done it. I've sent it to the state. So, um, hey, Mark. Yes, can we actually have you face this? Oh, we're having a struggle with you. Okay, so, um, and as far as somebody brought up employees, we're planning to, oh, houses, we're gonna probably a hundred and fifty or two hundred employees. So we're bringing that to the area also, and everybody, somebody mentioned police officers. We've already talked to a lot of the, the officers, uh, or the, the police departments. Our security on here is gonna, we're employing off duty cops. So we are keeping everything local as best we can. Um, and everybody's talking about the view that we're blocking. The view is blocked by the first forty five feet. Us adding additional height blocks nothing. The forty five feet stops. The forty-five feet stops everything that you can't see to the west after about twenty feet. Because right now you look out there, those that great view of the mountains, the mountains are three inches tall. The forty-five feet blocks it, not the seventy. What else we have? As far as somebody brought up, U Dot, U Dot has gone through this and U Dot has given us approval. We've already talked to that. We we've got to come to an agreement with you on our access of eighty-nine. So that they, you that's already been a big part of this. The property values for commercial are way higher than what you have right now. Way higher than residential and agricultural. So somebody mentioned retirement. This is going to boost your retirement, not hold it back. And somebody had mentioned even the livestock that's gonna take away their livestock view. Right now, if you look at that, there hasn't been a four hoofed animal on that property in years. So those products, animals that you see in those backyards already, they're not going in. They're gonna stay in those backyards. That view is not being hindered. Because it hasn't been one already. So nothing's changing. So and everything that as far as talking was about seven fifty and traffic. But if you realize everything you said, all your complaints that you had are already existing. You're already talking about your kids not being able to walk seven seven fifty right now. Traffic is so bad right now. I'm not bringing traffic into it. I'm, most of mine is coming out here. Very little is coming out here except out of the neighborhoods. So the traffic isn't isn't changing. So anyway, that's my.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate.
Can we rebuttal? It is absolutely corrupt. He doesn't come to my house and look at anything or any of these people's houses. Well, you can get up there and see that stuff and then you just let it be okay.
Well, you you have, you had your time to come up as well.
Yeah, we're just sharing information and we'll take all this information into account.
A few comments regarding the decision. Some consideration that the can the commission needs to consider with the project. And some of these may have been addressed and asked questions and comments from the public that also from the developer. So some considerations the staff would recommend you. You take are the history of the projects from this developer and whether this is ever taken place and and what the history of this type of development. Has been for them. Uh is this project consistent with the city's goals? Is it consistent with the direction that the city wants to go in? And the viability of the project to bring in additional economic development or things like that. Those are some of the staff considerations with a commercial. Development here. And the, we've said it many times, that the difference is the height. It is already in a loud use at forty-five feet. So we're talking about an increase to that height. Or whether that's setting a precedence in the future for future development, things like that need to be considered. And also access on seven fifty west has been an issue as we discussed when with city council was. We had a public hearing for the adoption of that transportation plan. That was adopted in February. And we, the city has identified the amount of traffic. We're actually in the middle of conducting the traffic impact study on the city roads. And the residents on seven fifty once may have noticed last week there were restricts that counting traffic and the speed to get collect that data. The city is identifying the areas that we are seeing increased traffic throughout the city. And as part of that adoption, we recognize that at some point we are reclassifying seven fifty west as a collector. And what that will do is allow the city to line funding to widen. At the the curb, that are sidewalk and other improvements on that road. And to be eligible for that, we have to start somewhere and the city has identified that. Entire seven fifty west corridor, both north and south of Highway eighty-nine as meeting. Use your attention. But those are some of the things that the city's working on to identify areas for efficient. And by funding to address those. Big developer already addressed the access off of Highway eighty-nine. They will be required to have an access permit for the commercial development that they're doing. Harrisville does have a corridor agreement with you that limits accesses and it already identifies the signal locations. Or just future signals and there isn't one included there. The city did address some of the past concerns, still recognizing there's always more the city can do. But we do have speed signs on seven fifty west where we do not have them in other areas of the city. The city recognized that as an area where those speed signs needed to be located. Are there any other comments that you'd like staff to address as coming?
The best thing that we don't really have control over the thing that is already done, commercial, already built a commercial building there. To walk the views dealing with the water and the privacy limitation of having a building next door.
And there was, to me, there was very few concerns about height, which was including the majority of what this was about.
Between the two, because the height comes zero to something is a concern, but it's a commercial property. They can build a commercial building on it.
And if it was forty-five or seven, then it would be the same amount of traffic, whether it was seventy under forty-five feet.
Thank you. To help with the commercial eventually on that side, it'd be nice to be able to allow those onto those collectors where it is. And then the, I'll say two other places than the city. So I noticed in our proposed. It says I have eighty-nine or conditional use potentially. We could put that as an arterial road. To allow it potentially on Washington. Well, I thought there's going to be a lot of these going in. Just to make it a little more comfortable there is the city. But that's one of the things that's stopping the commercial level and elsewhere is the ability to get roads and eager points. And there's only so many. These road access on eighty-nine where they could put two in and out in it. But this would be on that side of the parking lot, which wouldn't be very effective if it could go gap it. Or it's having one off the other side really does help it back and will help. But I'm going to the point on property taxes. I mean, it will lower residential property taxes, but you can sell your properties commercial because it's so future amenities for commercial. Which would allow you to do that higher. And we're not forcing anybody to, but.
I'm feeling like at this point with, we have Dave, Sean and Mark, will they go for it in a billion and a half or not? I'm thinking that until we get more information, until more people are informed about what we're actually doing here to Florida, the height of changes. I'm feeling like this is a table of shoes.
I agree.
I would come back to it in a month or something.
Can I address, Mark? Can I ask him a question?
Yes, sir.
If the height amendment is is not agreed on and we stay at a forty-five instead of a seventy. Does that kill your entire business plan?
It does. It does.
Reason why. Be no more commercial on that property. You know, you've proposed. The indoor facility, of course, outdoor swimming pool, indoor live theater, privately operated, indoor outdoor movie theater, published park. And and I did never think of that, say, the sexually oriented business limited to adult arcade.
Those are the uses currently allowed.
The reason why is because right now with that, we will be the only facility in the state of Utah that can host an indoor football game. And you have to have that height.
Because my businessman comes out of me.
Yep.
You have done your business research and you have clientele to come and help with the reason that you want to build this.
Absolutely fantastic. Absolutely. Hold it. Yeah, you talk to the school districts. We were the A Ds at the school districts to see the interest in the schools to be able to use it. And not have to go south way down to to St. George's and stuff, the whole championship football games. So I've talked, I've I've got, yeah, I've talked to a lot of you. Everybody was, except we knew the people on seven fifty would not. Totally understandable. Knew that was gonna happen.
Thank you.
So one recommendation from staff that you decided to table this item for the the next planning commission meeting. Is if you are, you can leave the public comment for written public comments. We've done that in the past.
That's not great. So if any of you have concerns that you haven't expressed or you know, other people weren't able to come tonight. You'll have an opportunity to continue to share your thoughts and feelings about this whole venture.
We'll entertain a motion to table. Table the recommendation or.
Table this agenda items for our next meeting, keeping the public hearing open until that time. So we can receive comments to Jenny, the city.
We have written comments?
In a second. When that comes back, we have, I'd say arterial roads and certainly ninety-nine.
Are you all in agreement that it then includes arterial roads?
That makes it better, more readable.
It does, it it does.
More descriptive. Better was usage.
We've had a project in the city that has faced the same thing, so it would open up. It would be specific to Highway eighty-nine.
Sorry, better film editing motion to stand up.
We'll move on to agenda height number five, action recommended grand final site and plan approval. For the public works facility located approximately seven fifty north and seven fifty west. We have Jenny with the staff engineer.
Thank you, commissioners. We'll move on here in our pocket. To our. The final site plan approval for the proposed public works facility over on seven fifty west. Lower seven fifty west. So I think commission is aware of all of the background on our project. So we'll jump through to the staff memo items relating to this. Final site plan approval. So we've identified the location, height, the materials of the walls, fences and hedges and string landscaping. And we've identified the red line will be. Pre-fabricated concrete wall. And the green line outlining here will be a metal cast. With the welded wire, thank you, a welded wire fence on the east, south. And just a small portion towards the west side for the. Materials for the fencing. We've identified in the architect has identified all of the landscaping and ground cover. To prevent the dust and erosion and provide a visual break. And we have also included a diagram of how the landscaping from the west. From seven fifty west, the view from that grid will be perceived with relationship to where the top is. Where the asphalt in the concrete will be and the fencing will have trees on the exterior side of the fence. And a small room before the sidewalk. So we've outlined that. The only conditions that need to be recommended are compliance with international building code. And who will require, I think. Says what we should, and we have, we'll have a briefing session meeting. Before we meet. And we do, so an update on utilities, Matt, I planned in his memo. The will serve letter from Bonavista, but we had some discussion about proposed developments around the city complex. And make sure, making sure that we install in seventeen fifty north, the new roadway, a water line that can. Provide the appropriate capacity. So we've kind of been having discussion with Bonavista, the fire district. And city staff with the engineers to identify and make sure that we put the appropriate side pipe size in there. So they're running their calculations to make sure that we we do that. And that hasn't completed this process yet. We're also requesting a meeting with Rocky Mountain Power. Understanding is that the representative for our areas have a medical leave of some sort. So we're still working out the details of meeting with Rocky Mountain Power and Dominion Energy. But we don't want to discuss any service issues or problem. We will make sure that those, we have those final approvals before we begin any kind of construction. Are there any questions for staff that you have? Justin here, Matt was on earlier, but I think he had to drop off. So, but we do have the architect here tonight doing this with us as well. So if you have any questions.
So the will serve whether for Bonavista, does that include the irrigation water from them as well?
Yes, we did ask them to do, we identified what, we, since we're using a zero skate style landscaping. And we've identified that there won't be a lot of use and it will be a temporary use. Once we install, with the future phases, once we install the secondary water system, we won't have to use.
Because that would make a big difference for what you can collect.
Justin, the other thing you want to add?
Yes, so. A little more insight is Bonavista's already, application fees and everything have already been paid. So we're totally above board. We did have a meeting with Rocky Mountain Power onsite Tuesday. Matt, myself, and Dugan and another member of his team. Were able to meet with the representative with Rocky Mountain Power. We are gonna have to work with a couple neighbors that have above-ground power lines. To help them install underground. But again, that's just safety and better for everybody. As we, as we make that connection and get that better. So there's, there's two homes, three homes that we'll, we'll have to work with to get underground. That will be the bosses. Right next to our property and then the old house that was the original gallery. House, house and one more to the south of that. So we will get with those residents and get that taken care of. Dominion Energy has been contacted also. So they, they waiting, we're just waiting for them to re-reach out and set up that meeting. We would really like for you guys to to invite Dugan up to look at some of the renderings that we have. We're pretty, we worked very diligently and very hard and we're very excited about what the final outcome is. And any of the programs you can show you. This is just a better imagery and and actually a three D modeling. To completely see the entire campus of what the public will look like.
Thank you, Justin. Lovely, lovely. So we say, well, Dugan, if you wanted to show us.
Jen can plug into this one or bring it to plug into the side?
The zoom participants just will be able.
Thank you. Thank you.
So go ahead and plug into the main.
It's good, it's great.
Yeah.
All right, my apologies, I had the model open and I obviously. Thanks, man, I'm over. Um, Justin's correct, um, in his, kind of his wording. Nothing's really changed, um, we're just, uh. Have, have the ability to kind of zoom around in real time and have a look at the building. I think with the exception of what Jenny has already mentioned. Um, about the, uh, about the inclusion. Uh, kind of on that side and.
Do you have an example of what the cement wall looked like? It's gonna go on.
Um.
I mean, some of those look really nice.
Yeah, I mean, our, our basis of design, um, will be, uh.
So as you drive off the path eleven hundred west. There's that, um, precast concrete, it looks almost like a faux wood. So we'll have that texture, we'll have a wood panel texture. Solid wall.
Nice.
And, and it's right across the street here. So, yeah, it will be very, very nice looking.
I don't think we've like landed on a final color or pattern.
We're not, we're not to that.
Alright, so. Um, you can, you can see this is our, this is kind of our admin building, it's a, it's a two-story structure. Um, and then this is our, our shop with our salt storage and then at the end, the truck wash. Uh, kind of attached to that end.
It's either view from seven fifteen.
So that in that southwest corner is that where the retention fund is gonna be?
Yeah. I'm not, I don't currently have it shown depressed, um, but that, that would be the, uh, the intent is that. Would be a little bit lower in there for detention.
About, about how big will that retention fund be, just so we're curious?
Um, I think it. Um, I think we're holding it about ten feet off this edge. And about five or six feet off this edge, five or six feet off this edge. About five or six feet, that inch of grass. Um, yeah, like a bio native, uh, grass, so not, uh, your kind of Kentucky wood grass that's gonna require a lot of watering, something that's drought tolerant. Um, but, uh, not using a lot of water on it. Those are, this, this is kind of the beginnings of a, of what the burn would kind of start to look like. Um, where we're, we're raising up and then on the back side, just looking back down. To allow a generous area for the trees. And to be able to grow.
So anything to hold that is there? How, how are you, uh, confining the burn?
Uh, so the, the, uh, the backside of the burn will be gravel mulch. Um, and the city already has an abundance that already on site, so we're making use of that. Um, and then the, the bio native, uh, grass, it is still a grass that has roots and brooks, and so it will. Be it is for looking.
Is there a difference in the garden here and everything near the parking lot?
Yeah, technically it's all kind of in the zero scape family because it's all drought, drought tolerant and native plantings. Um, the, the. This is kind of the, the main focus of our, of our landscape area where we're kind of intentionally planting some shorter, more colorful trees. Um, as well as kind of providing kind of a, uh, uh, an area to look more like kind of a natural metal sort of look right there. Um, it's also, uh, right out the window, um. Here, uh, is the, the conference room, uh, for the, for the admin building, so. Um, the, uh, the, the staff as well as any sort of public meetings that are out there for construction meetings. All have kind of access to kind of that view, um, out through there.
That's. And that's the view from seven fifty?
The view from seven fifteen, seventeen fifty, right? So okay, I know where.
Yeah, so that's.
That's approaching it from the west right there.
Yes. From seven. Yes.
So if you think that this.
That's different.
Yes, so that's a few struggles.
Yeah. This, uh. This road here is what will become seventeen fifty and will connect to.
And it will connect to eighty nine?
Yes.
So when we have a train crossing the track for twenty minutes, our guys can go work somewhere else?
Yes.
There'll be a light on eighty nine as well. Then it'll go to the golf course on the other side. Thank you.
Any questions?
Soon we'll get the.
We're, we're getting, we're getting pretty close, um, we, we have, um. A very adamant, uh, timeline, we're going to submit our building permit before July first. Um, because the, uh, the state is adopting the new international building code. On July first, so any projects submitted after that would have to. Um, comply to that code, um, and so we're, all of our current design work has been based off of our current code.
So we redesigned that this product.
There's, there's a couple items that, um, that are some, some noticeable changes, um, that. Add square footage to the building, um, because there are some, uh. Circulation there is, is that are, that are increasing. Um, but so if we add square footage, we're adding cost, uh, I think what we're trying to avoid. Um, so there, there. We're not, we're not negatively impacting the project at all by not adopting.
Thank you. Anything to approve?
I would love to do that. Uh, okay, so we want to, can we go back, if we need to include, right, the, uh, not only what Matt included in here, but that's a staff. And I just refer to that will be a staff. And engineers. Alright, I motion to approve. Um. The final site plan for the public works facility located approximately seventeen fifty north, seven fifty west. Uh, to include the staff and engineers memo. And all the requirements that are listed therein and any other. Um, requirements by the city, except.
This is like a review there.
We'll move on to the agenda item number six, discussion action recommended grand final subdivision approval for Ben Longman views. Phase two D located approximately two hundred west and two thousand north. Uh, we'll use memo with Jenny. She worked it tonight.
Thank you. So. We're waiting for it to load here, but in the meantime. You're all very familiar with Ben Longman developments, this phase is the upper. East, to the north, northeast corner that actually runs to two thousand north. And. So there's a couple of things to follow up on with the approval on this, they did, they did not have their landscaping plan included with their submission. So your approval will be subject to. Items which the landscaping would be one of them. Sorry, we are looking to upgrade this computer, let me see if I can just pull it up here, show you. So there are a couple of concerns from the city engineer, this space does include the one hundred twenty-two residential units, some of these units are. Twin homes or duplex units and the others are single family, there's no townhomes or apartment complexes in this space. The city engineer identified a concern with the asphalt tie-in and new gutter elevations on two thousand north, so they need to, to address those. And this pavement sections need to match our city standard that was approved in phase two A. They also need a will serve letter from Bonavista providing for the culinary water and a final approval letter from Northview Fire District. Uh, they also, he included the improvement plans, which could be the landscaping plans for the park, there is one park and. Couple of open space locations in this space that they need to include. Once those final processing items, uh, would be the SWIP. The engineer's cost estimate for this phase. To be submitted by the project engineer for our engineer to review and then they'll have to use this city engineer susceptible standards. Parties. And have reconstruction meeting before, yeah, also I believe identified that, yes, up here in the first paragraph. The final, the phase two A needs to be, cause prior to this. Phase going in because it has the main road that will connect from eighty-nine to the pass and. So you would have a few. Uh, conditions on recommending final approval through city council of phase two B for Ben Longman's subdivision.
Any of us expected, I think, this significant amount of time?
Uh, I thought that Velver was gonna join us tonight, but he is supposed to provide us, I told him he couldn't be on. Uh, apply for final through city council until these others are released. Second, those types of conditions.
We should wait until.
If you'd like to see it again, you're welcome to, if you'd like us to bring it back.
You have, you have story to tell that anyway, all our city council, city councils among the way, yeah.
So it's up to you, commissioners, that you'd like to see it again before. I will let the developer know.
So if that being the case, it would be a motion to table.
Yes, until the items of the city engineers know.
Motion to. Table our. We're getting the subdivision approval for Ben Longman Q's base two D until. Uh, at least next, then commission meeting so we can get number of these items on the engineer's demo address before, so we have the opportunity to see them. Some plans prior to granting or recommending, I don't say, uh, final subdivision approval.
In a second? In a second? All in favor? Right, our number seven agenda item is a helpful comment, it can be about anything concerning the same rules as we did before with a three-minute maximum. Uh, to state your name clearly. We'll open that up.
Okay, so again, um, just three things for, a few more, um. First, I would like to recognize and thank publicly the public works department for coming out and helping with funding. They were willing to come, they did come, they did a good job, they were attentive, you guys did a great job, thank you guys. Appreciate it very much. It's very nice, um, I would wonder if you can tell me if the south or west end of seven fifty is also considered to be a future collector or not? You guys know?
Actually, same as before, it's just public comments, not a Q and A session.
Okay, I took note that you all, as you were looking at the elevation of the public works department building, which is nice, very nice. And the elevation of it's nice and the access is nice. And yeah, it looks great driving by. Um, if that is gonna be designated a collector and we have the same rule that affects public transportation, well then. You know, that kind of speaks to itself, um. You know, that looks really greedy, doesn't matter what it looks like if it aren't. Is how it came across. To us it does. Um, somebody talked about their property value, you know, their property is their retirement, so is mine. Mine's on the east side of the street, it's not commercial, I'm not gonna be compensated, I'm going to lose property value. And that is my retirement. Just throwing that out, um. And then, uh, some. Notification of things like this, this public hearing thing that came out in the water bill. Says you're gonna take public comment for and against the proposed ordinance, amending the commercial zone high requirements for indoor commercial athletic facilities. No description as to where that is, what building it is, who it affects. How do we know that something's going on that impacts us, we can go to the city's website. I do that when I have reason to, I don't do it as a matter of course, we can go to the city's Facebook page, I'm pretty picky about where I go on Facebook. I don't do that. Um, there was supposedly, this says that there was a sign hung on somewhere on twenty-one fifty north. That doesn't even touch what this impacts. Is there some way? That we can get more public notice displayed so people are aware that there's something that impacts them that they should be involved in? Thank you.
Thank you, so I'm ready to close public comment and then move on to item number eight to staff follow. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for this.
I'm back to collector, it says, it is a point, not wait it out, right?
It will be.
Will be, so it will be. That's what I thought.
And the public works building. Um, so. I think we have kind of addressed that. The. Notification of a public hearing item. So with an ordinance like this, it's a notification citywide, so if we're doing a. Zoning change to a property located near someone, so when they come in to rezone. The additional.
Every house got a flyer.
We do that as a courtesy, that is not required any longer in state law, but we choose to do that to try and increase the amount of public notice that we give.
Right.
What's required is that we put it on our website, we put it on the public notice website, we go, we already go above and beyond by doing it on Facebook and putting it in the newsletter. We try our best to, we've been on the marquee, we use every available avenue for us. Um, but we, we do struggle, we spend the city council as well and gaining the information out there.
There are new locations that people can check physically by the cabin, the front door.
We have three locations.
Have email or things.
We're, we're doing what we have to do.
Absolutely.
They email me everything related. Many times in a change or a day, which minutes they.
It's not possible for us to include all of the information in the newsletter, so. The only other staff follow up I have is recently we've been made aware of to complete your hours of training required. Of some free training that is, is sponsored by the property of the ombudsman, property rights, the office of the ombudsman. And I will send out the link and you can create a login and they have a number of trainings that you can do. And I can text journal and after, I've been trying to complete one of the trainings this weekend, it hasn't happened yet. But they seem to be really engaging and user friendly, also I'll send that. Out to you all as a free training opportunity now that you have to get those um acquired.
I see that. I will leave that on the accounts, I guess, we need to tell you to sit down, I got an email.
Very good, any of those things that help with your planning.
That's what I was saying, refer in that, and it was interesting, take um, how we do things to deal with that and to. Take the voice, remember everything.
That's the only.
We'll take this opportunity that. In exact about that, about to join this meeting at eight thirty two.
Thank you.